compiled with the village manager and the village clerk, the Ridgewood News and the Record Newspapers and posted on the bulletin board in the entry lobby of the village municipal offices at 131 North Maple Avenue and on the village website, all in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Okay, flag slip. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public for its stance. One nation, under God. Indivisible, et cetera.
And justice for all. Okay, roll call Jane.
Mayor Newsen?
Yeah.
Chief Enger. Councilwoman Reynolds?
Here.
Richard Joe?
Here.
Diane O'Brien?
Here.
Debbie Petri? Melanie Huberman?
Here.
Fran Bartow? Allison Wesner?
You're on mute, Allison. Allison's muted.
Right.
Okay, she is there. Okay.
Here.
We got you.
First order of business, are there any public comments on topics not pending before the board?
I have one person raising their hand.
Sure.
Ty Bor.
Yep.
You have unmute yourself.
Actually, this is T-Bor from Conklin Associates on the Hopper Condominium Association application. I want to make sure I'm logged in.
Okay, yep, we can hear you.
Thank you.
All right. One more, hold on.
Sure.
Labar Biara.
Yes, I am just making sure I can communicate with you. How are you?
Yep, we can hear you fine.
Thanks very much.
Everybody doesn't need to test their communications. This is for public comment. All right.
Is that it?
Yeah, that was it.
Okay, do we have any committee, commission, or professional updates for non-agenda topics?
I, I sort of do. I say that because it's not an update. It's sort of a, more like a blast from the past. The Open Space Committee is inquiring about upperdy across from the stable in Grayden. As you'll recall, the Family Homestead LLC and Mr. and Mrs. Blood made application to us, I believe it was October 2019. There were a lot of questions from the board members at that time, and I believe that that meeting ended with they would be coming back to address the issues that were raised by the board. And then I think that, you know, in the new year, we had a series of meeting cancellations, and I don't think they ever came back to us, but I, I wanted to reach out to you guys because maybe you have a better recollection of what the status of that is. I don't think there is one. No, they, they, I did not get any revised plans or, or anything back from them at this point. Okay, that's what I thought. So I just wanted to confirm that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other updates?
I only have one item, and that is two new planning board members will be appointed by the village council tomorrow evening, Igor Labarski and Darlene Johnson, and they will be joining us at our next meeting when they'll be sworn in. And I apologize to Jane immensely for any confusion or first communications because we, I, some of you may see they're on tonight's agenda for the oath of office. However, they cannot be sworn in until such time that they are appointed by village council. So, but we look forward to them joining us, and I know one of them is on the line and going to just be listening in as a panelist. So that's great. And then I'm going to ask someone to update on the visioning. Thanks.
Let's see, for the visioning, Diane, did you want to update on it, or, okay? We carried it to the next meeting. We were given a little more time. Neil Desai made the changes. I guess they're posted. They were just some minor changes that were reported. So it'll be up there. People will have time to review it, and then we'll have it at the meeting on October 20th.
Yeah, Chairman, there won't be any further notice, correct? It's just advised tonight on this meeting.
Yep, that's no further notice. That's agenda number, item number four. So we're just dealing with it now. So it's carried to October 20, 2020 without further notice.
So, and I'll just add to that. It's also on the village website, and I know Dylan can probably hear me, albeit he is muted, but I believe that we just need a live link. There needs to be some correction on the live link. So if we can get that, that would be super good.
Okay.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you ever tonight.
And the website that they have mentions what the changes were. So there weren't really anything super substantive on it. There was added for COVID and one other item with some extra pictures and stuff. But since it's such a long document, we felt more comfortable if people had it just a little bit more time and notice for it.
Can I just, I wanted to add one more thing. There was a little social media comment about this, and somebody took a snapshot, a screenshot of something Melanie had posted back in August, late August of 2017, which was the very first meeting that we had, with the suggestion that this is taking us entirely too long to get this job done. But I wanted to just point out that we had always anticipated that it would be a lengthy process, and with the COVID-19 pandemic, it seems that prudent on our part, and perhaps serendipitous, that this delay has resulted in a much better product, which also contemplates how to respond to future pandemics. And so I just wanted to add that little note, and I don't know if anyone else has to add to that, but I, I think it actually, in the long run, this little bit of delay has resulted in a much better product for the village, for all of our residents. So just wanted to add.
I mean, I don't look at it as, as delay. I think it's a process, and then it, you know, it takes a while to get a lot of information and input. We were tapping on all different levels to get input from everybody. So I think it was a process, and the timing just went just right, I think, for it.
Great, thanks.
Compared to other towns, Chair, Ridgewood has gone over and above trying to bring everybody who may have an interest or could get noticed to then have the ability to comment. And that is fantastic because it's the people's town, and if they want to have comment, be included in the process, Ridgewood has done that. And probably the, the only issue with timing would be COVID-19, because the bringing people together really is what the spirit of this process is about.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, any other updates or comments? Okay, do we have any correspondence, Jane?
No.
Okay, all right, our number three on the agenda is Historic Preservation Commission Review. We're reviewing these because they don't have a quorum for the HPC. So the first one up will be Sombrero to Coria, 14 Oak Street, block 3805, lot eight, paint facade, and new sign.
Okay, Dylan, if you can put on Al.
Al Barrow.
Chalob, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
Um, I believe that's it.
Okay, I'm bringing them in. All right, anybody else unmute?
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Hi, can you hear us? Fine?
Yes.
Okay, all right, you want to just give us a little presentation of what you're trying to do?
Well, first of all, let me say that we're excited about joining the community. And yeah, basically what we want to do is paint the, the front of the building to a more neutral color and just add our sign in the front there.
Our planner's just pulling up the, what was sent in just to show us.
Can I ask a question? Hi, Al, this is Mayor Newsen, and I have a couple of questions about the... Somebody playing music?
No.
Okay, hello, Al?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is Mayor Newsen. I have a couple of questions relative to the, the images that were sent. The, the color on it, the, the color sample appears to be a gray, but the image appears to be really a very stark white. Can you just expand on what color the facade will be?
It will be the, the, the color, the chip, I guess, that we sent in the email, which will be like a light gray.
Okay, and that's what it appears. I see that it's a little off color, drift of mist. It appears a little off color from, I went to the, I guess it's Sherwin-Williams website, and it's a little bit off. But I think the question is also, what is the background color on the sombrero sign, the actual 24 by, you know, 96 inch piece? What is that background color?
That, that's going to be white.
Okay, all right, great, okay. And then the rest, the other trim work is black, correct?
Yes.
Gray and black, okay, all right, great, okay.
Um, I have one quick question. So you're keeping the lights at the top of the building. I see that there's two right above the first floor. Are you removing those? And if so, are you replacing them with something else?
No, we're keeping the existing gooseneck lighting that's there. We're just going to paint them black as well, the same black as the trimming.
And it, for the ones right, like there's one right above the front door, it looks like in the street view.
So there actually appears to be two?
Yeah.
Like little acorn shaped lights? Is that fair, Diane?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was looking at.
The, the one above the sign?
No, below the sign, above the first level.
Above the door, the entryway.
There's one above the door and one above the left umbrella.
They mean in the sensible one?
Yeah.
I, I don't think there's anything there. I mean, I haven't seen any lights there. I don't, and if there are, we're, we're not touching that. Oh, okay, I see those. Okay. Well, any, any lighting that's there, we're going to keep?
Okay, that's great.
We're just gonna, we're just gonna paint them black.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
Oh, I do have a question. What's the, the total height of the lettering is 16 inches? That's code, right? Mary Ann? From the top to bottom is 16 inch?
From, it's from, from the top of the, of the sombrero, the hat, to the bottom of the word Ta Coria, that's 16 inches.
Right, no, and I'm just asking, that's, that's our, that's code.
And if, if it's not, there would be variance included, and there's not one here, according to the zoning officer.
No, that is code. Right, so the reason I'm asking is, what is the actual height of the S, the sombrero text?
Yeah, that, that I don't have. We, we just, we just went with the suggested 16 inch measurement from the top of the, of the sombrero to the bottom of the word Ta Coria. But I'm not, I'm not sure. I would have to check with my sign people. I'm not sure what size the other, the, the letters are on the, you, you're talking about the bigger, the text, right? The, what the word sombrero?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It looks like, I mean, if you were gonna, just to judge the four inch change on the top and the bottom, it looks like it's probably around 12 inches.
So, and then, again, sorry, Mary Ann, I'm just kind of asking a couple of questions here. The 72 inch is the widest that that can be based on the width of the overall building? Is that correct?
The, well, I'd have to look up exactly what it says. May I?
Yeah, go ahead, Jane.
Okay. If the building, the building is 15 feet, 18, 8 inches, so this width of the sign, which is 96 inches, is allowed to be 75% the width of the building.
So, but in other words, so at, at, okay, 15 feet, 8 inches, and we have 96 inches. So can sombrero actually be expanded to that, to the, a little bit more on the animal? It's your sign, Al. I'm not, I'm just, for me, when I look at the sign, when I look at it from the elevation, it almost looks like the letters are hard to read. I don't know if anyone else is experiencing that.
I, I think it's due to the fact that the, I'm assuming the small, the, it's a small picture that you're seeing. My graphic artist, the designer, he, he, he mentioned that even if, if we made it wider, it might throw it off balance. So he thought that that would be a good, a, a, a good size for the actual sign and the, the letters.
Okay. All right, I don't know, maybe nobody else is experiencing that, but it's fine, it's cute.
Any other questions?
It might just be because they're more bubble, bubbly than sensible, on the sensible one. I think they're bright. I think you'll see them more than you think.
Yeah, I actually think that it's the, the shadow that's causing it. It's the shadow because the shadow on the A makes the E look blacked out in the background. So the shadow is just what it is. It's how it looks to me. It's a little bit difficult, but my, just me, I guess.
Mary Ann, quick question. You got four different colors in terms of letters, plus the black letters, plus the black border and the white background. Coloring wise, is that acceptable?
Well, generally, this is something that's up to the board. The board can choose if they feel that the color of the signs is something that is outside the scope of the historic impact. It really is up to the board. There are some boards that will look at this strictly and say that even the color of the signs should be consistent with the historic colors. But my, my experience so far in Ridgewood has been that, that they take the more modern approach and mesh the historic buildings with some modern design. And it's really up to the board. And there's nothing in the ordinance that says you can't use colors.
That's how I read it, too. Thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually had a sign years ago, and I know I, I bring the, kind of the historic, historic preservation outlook here. So we had a sign years ago. It was Kidville, I think. And that one had some primary colors, and, and that one, that was fine with HPC. So just a little perspective there.
I don't have, I have no problem with the color.
Right.
The other stores, you know, there's a couple of kids' clothing stores or something that have bright, maybe not one, you know, like rainbow like this, but there's, you know, a variety of colors in them. I like it.
Yeah, I like it, too. I don't have any problem with the colors of the sign.
Al, when will you be opening?
We'll, we'll, we're finalizing permits, so we're hoping that by middle of November, we should be able to be open.
Good luck.
Thank you. We can't wait to serve you guys.
Okay, yeah, everyone's in favor, I guess, okay?
Yes.
Anyone negative? Nope? Okay, all right, congratulations, Al. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
And Rich, you and Jane can put together correspondence that advises that it's satisfactory to the HPC as the planning board's sitting as the HPC?
Yep, okay. All right, 3B is Nueva Criatura Beauty Salon, 30 Wilsey Square, block 3807, lot 6.01, proposed sign.
I see.
And Claudia Kowalski.
Um. Hang on.
I have Lynn Oles raising her hand.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's Lynn Wall Relevate.
Okay, bringing her in as panelist. Lynn, you need to unmute yourself.
There you go, okay.
Can you hear us, Lynn?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so you can just make an introduction and tell us about what you're doing.
Okay, I'm the owner of Lynn from Signs by Lynn. We are proposing a sandblasted where the letters stand up. They're carved out, and there's a wood grain which you can't see because the background of the sign is white, but it has a wood grain effect to it. And then just the black border, all black lettering, and then her little butterfly, which means beautiful. Her name means beautiful creature, beauty salon. So she's proposing 10 feet wide by 2 feet high, same 16 inch height, total lettering area. I went over it with Jane, and that's what she's proposing. I don't know if she's doing anything to the front of the building, but maybe Jane would know more than that.
If she's, if she's what?
If she's going to paint anything with the front of the building, you know?
She has not said anything. It was only for the sign.
Okay, okay, so just for the sign.
I'm assuming the awning is coming down?
The awning, yes, I think it's down already. I don't think it's there.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do, actually do have a question. So if I'm looking at, just hang on a second. Hang on one moment. Sorry, Lynn. So when I'm looking at the shop to the left, it's Karma Organic Spa. And for whatever reason, in my mind, the sign seems more, it just seems wider. I mean, they're relatively the same size shops, and yet the sign here seems more contained. Is there a reason that you just went with such a kind of a, you didn't go a little bit wider? And I just, I, I would ask, I guess, Jane, if that's, would have been permissible. I'm only asking. It's, it's your sign. It's beautiful. Just asking.
Yeah, I think this was the allowed square footage I was allowed to use. But I don't think it's any, this is what, our sketch is just for viewing purposes. It might not be exactly to scale, so it may be more in keeping because that sign next, next to it looks about 10 feet wide. I could, you know, I could go measure and see, and you'd have a better idea. But no, I think that's the max. Also, because we can only use 16 inches high, there would just be more and more white space on the left and right side of the sign. So this was a nice size for what's there.
I think what I'm asking is on the actual sign panel, could the letters have actually been wider, just fill in the space on the actual sign panel to the left and the right? Or are you saying that that's what was permitted in the, the lettering with?
Right, you can only go so, if you go so high, you can only go so wide with the font.
That was your max, got it, okay. Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have, I have a question. And it may not, you may not know, since you're the sign designer, but one of the things that I see in this picture here is that the cornice in the front of the building seems to be painted as distinct color. And some of the other buildings here, like some of the other storefronts like this one, has the same background. And given the white, that it's white, the sign is white, it almost would seem that, that if this is the sign, I, I guess that's my question, if this is the limit of the sign, is this background here going to be the same gray as the cornice? Or is your sign the entire rectangle?
No, it's not the entire, just where you see it.
Does, does this, this outline with the black line?
Correct.
No?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so I mean, my, my... Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you see my cursor, which is that, this hand?
Yes.
Okay, so, so your sign is just that. I guess it, it would be my recommendation that if that's the case, that this background here then be painted the same as the rest of the cornice of the building, if that's not part of your design, so that there's consistency and with, with, with the building and all the rest of the storefronts. Historically, that would be characteristic. So it won't change your sign, and it just won't look as though that that was left out of the picture. Since you're not really responsible for that, and you're not sure what the owner was planning, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, so you're saying the same color, the gray color, more like the gray, the darker, the medium gray?
Just the area that's not within the sign, yes, the background. And that's up to the board. It would be up to the board to make that choice if they want to, you know, also suggest to you that you do that. But I think that's something I wanted to point out as, as typical historic characteristic.
Okay, I'll let them know.
I think that would look nice.
I actually think it would be really nice to do with that, pick up that gray. It would make that whole sign pop.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, anyone opposed? All in favor, I get?
I'm sorry, I have another question.
Yeah.
Does this application have any lighting on it, or is this just a sign?
Nope, just a sign.
Okay, so there's no goosenecks or anything?
No, there is, she, there's that, it's only 2, 2 feet of space.
Okay.
But no, she did not, you know, want, I don't, I see a gooseneck on a couple of them, yes, and gooseneck lights. But no, she didn't, she didn't ask me for that.
All right, very good, okay, I'm good. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, good luck to you.
Okay.
Jane, we'll need another letter on that one.
With the recommendation of the background, Richard?
Yep. Okay, our next item will be Day European Cafe, 9 South Broad Street, block 3809, lot 1, proposed sign. This is Clara Shihoo.
Yeah, Claire.
Bring her in.
Yep.
Clara, you need to unmute.
Hello, everyone.
Hello. How are you?
Good, how is everyone?
Good. You want to just introduce yourself and then just take us through what you're doing here for the signage?
Yeah, absolutely. My name's Claire, and we're going to be opening up, me and my family are opening up a European cafe. It's going to be called Day European Cafe, where Broad Street Cafe used to be. And the sign is going to be a light turquoise blue. It's going to be 96 feet, I'm sorry, 96 inches wide and then 20 inches high vertically. And I'm, I'm having done this before, so I'm not sure, but any, any questions?
Okay, sure. Anyone have questions for Claire?
I do. The awning that's currently there, is that going to remain?
That's actually already gone.
Okay, will you have any awning there or no?
We would like to put an awning in maybe a little bit down the line, but not at this moment.
Okay. And the green color on the building is the whole building, so that'll stay, right?
Yeah, we won't be able to change that.
I think it's the, all the same owner, the whole?
It is, yeah, we have the same landlord as the rest of the people next to us.
Can I ask how you chose that, like teal color? Is, does that have anything to do with your cafe?
So the cafe is mostly like white and gray tones with black accents, and then just to add a pop of color, because we are European Cafe, we happen to be Greek and Albanian, so like near the blue water. So just to kind of give it that Mediterranean blue feel and, and brighten it up a little bit, because otherwise it would have been pretty dark inside without it.
Okay.
Without the accents.
Greek flag colors, I think.
Greek flag colors, I think.
Yeah, pretty close.
Any questions, other questions?
Well, I, I mean, I, I don't know. I don't want to be rude or anything. I just, I feel like the colors clash. I don't know, does anybody else feel that way? Or am I the only one?
You're saying the green versus the turquoise?
Yeah.
Yeah, I kind of felt the same way, but it, we can't change the color of the green, so.
Yeah, the issue is, and I totally agree with you in terms of like, if I could change the color of the green, I really would. We also bought an espresso coffee machine that's that color. And the other accents are that color, so that's kind of like why the sign would have been that color. But if it was up to me, that green would be white.
No, I guess it's your branding, so.
Yeah.
I, I think the color is beautiful, but I do agree that it clashes. Just a suggestion and of course totally up to you, but could you maybe invert the colors and do a white background with the turquoise lettering?
Um, I wouldn't, I like, don't really want to do that, to be honest. If you really don't like the color, then I could like go back to my family. We could revisit colors. It's just like I said, it matches the things that we did on the inside.
But inside, you said you have gray. Say that to me again, Claire. You have grays and blacks, did you say?
No, it's, it's like white and then the gray is a light blue gray. Like it's very light still, but like all the accents are that color and that expensive coffee espresso machine that we had invested is that color.
I, I see what everybody's saying. I just, you know, if, is it worth maybe just looking at a couple other options, maybe? I, but I, I don't think so. It sounds like the family's already invested in this color and you know, if we could do something about the green, maybe we would, but we can't.
Yeah, the green one's a tough thing about it, but I do like the sign. It's just tough with the background, which you can't change, but I could see how that color's important, how it'll probably match some of the equipment and stuff like that. And as a European.
The logo is that color too.
The D, the D, the lettering, the DEA, what color, is that like a, can you just scroll up a little? I, you don't have to, I'm just wondering, is that like, that's an off-white, right? If I saw it correctly?
Yeah, it's gonna be like almost white, but just a slight off-white.
Cream.
Yeah, but just because white doesn't stay white very long, but it's gonna basically be as white as possible.
Okay, gotcha.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, Claire, can you scroll up again to show the sign itself?
Oh, you mean this way?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go. One of the things I, I'd like to add, which may, may, we just don't know, but now that the awning is gone, I think the awning also clashes. So with the awning not there and you be able to see the brick, the exposed brick may actually make the sign fit in a little better. Once you see the brick and the, and not the stripes of the awning. Actually, the brick will, will go with the teal.
Can you move it up just to see the sign without the building itself?
Oh.
It's the slide above.
It's the one above? Okay.
Thanks, some, yeah, right. Yes.
Yes, stop there. Okay, so that, that would be the rendition clear as to what's happening here. So if you superimpose that the way it looks now on the top, superimpose it where you can hardly see the writing on the bottom there. And, and Mary Ann, you were saying with the brick itself might be a different look, right?
Yeah, I actually think it might not class as, clash as much once the awning is, you know, because the awning is in the picture is blocking really the brick and what you'd act, what it actually will look like.
Yeah, I think, can they, is there any ability to move this? I think you're right, now that if you look at it, can the sign be even a touch lower? It has to be that height? Or I guess I can't really see where the doorway is.
We just put that there for visual purposes, so if you'd like us to lower it a little bit, that's not a problem at all, obviously.
No, I'm just wondering if, if it is against the brick, it might, Lorraine, you see when you had Mary Ann.
Come down a little bit, whereas it's all three store fronts.
Right there, yeah.
Yeah.
That sign was closer to the brick. It's, you're right, it is less on that green. That's gonna look nice. I mean, I think the blue with that brick color could really work. Yeah, it doesn't, you can't really see it well on this picture, but.
Yeah, you can't tell. Even if it is in the same place, it still might look better with the brick just below it. So regardless of where it goes, it, the brick will actually help.
Because I think, don't you want the signs to be basically the same height? You know, as Finka, like so.
I mean, look at this, though, the brick on this building, it seems very damaged. I would think we want it covered as much as, you know, as much of that. I, I don't know if that's even matters. It's, I think it'll look nice. You're right, without the awning, it's much better. But yes, I see what you're saying, Lorraine. Finka's way up top. Broad Street Cafe was way up top.
That, that is true. It is probably important to keep the consistency on the stores as well. It is, it is, it is conforming. And it doesn't, doesn't violate anything. It's just a matter of fitting in and, and honestly, even if the colors do clash lightly, it's probably more important that the rhythm of the signage within the building on, on the other storefronts all match up. And this one being a totally different color, but it doesn't have the awning. So without the awning, it actually might work better.
Okay.
Any other questions on the side? Comments? Okay, anyone not in favor of the sign? So everyone favorable, considering? Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. All right, Jane, we'll need a letter on that. Okay, Claire, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, our next application will be Christie's International Real Estate, 40 West Ridgewood Avenue, Block 2201, Lot 12, proposed sign. This is the Vincent Labar, uh, Barbaria. Hi, Ben, Vincent, can you hear us?
Yes, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Okay, can you, you want to just tell us about the sign that you're proposing?
Sure, this is 40 West Ridgewood Avenue. It's going to be a real estate office. And the sign that I'm proposing is 21 by 96. That's the total size of the sign. The building, I didn't take a copy with me that I handed in, but I think the building was 34 feet across, so it's definitely less than this 75%. The letter sizes, I believe, are all within your regulations. We actually also have the building over to the right, so I have done this with you before. And I guess that's all I have to add right now.
Okay, anyone have questions for Vincent?
We ran into this at Historic Preservation Commission, probably Diane, you might remember, or Susan would. I don't know, maybe almost a year ago, when Walgreens wanted to do the sign in town and the regulation, they, I guess whatever the regulations were, it, it allowed, it, it, something went haywire and their sign ended up being almost too small. Do you not, so you're saying this sign is smaller than what you'd be allowed to put up there?
Oh yeah, it's, it's not the maximum, but the thing is where we want to put the sign, there, it doesn't really, really allow for much height.
I, I see.
So if you're suggesting that, you know, I took advantage of the width, it was the opinion of my graphic designer that it may look a little disproportionate or unproportionate.
I mean, you have a recognizable brand name, obviously, so, and so did Walgreens. It was just on that side. They had a much more flat surface to work with. I see what you're saying about the.
It's very restrictive.
Yeah. All right, that was my only question.
Any other questions, comments?
Is that a plaster background, Vincent?
The, the building is stucco.
Stucco, that's what I meant, I'm sorry. And then that's the Christie's logo, that's the brand.
Yes.
Everything, the shape of the letters, the coloring, the whole bit.
That's correct.
Anyone else? Yeah, I think it looks clean and neat, you know, and I guess the scale's limited by what you can put because the height, but I think it looks good.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, anyone opposed to it? All right. Okay, thanks, Vincent. I think, you know, it's fine with us.
Once again, thank you.
Okay, Jane will need a letter.
Okay.
Okay. Item four on the agenda, we already addressed. That was the master plan, which we're carrying to October 2020, without further notice. So the next item will be the Hopper Ridge condominium association, Block 4104, Lot 3, application for major preliminary and final site plan, soil movement and variance approval. This was carried from September 1, 2020, without further notice.
And I think Ms. O'Brien, are you gonna recuse?
Yes, I need to recuse myself from this.
Okay.
Where is, do we have, did we lose Susan?
I thought she went with the picture. I think we did lose her.
We did.
Yeah, I don't think she's.
I wonder how long she's been gone.
Yeah, I saw her name and then.
Yeah, she was here a minute ago. I just wonder if she fell off for some reason and can't get back.
I'm not showing her on the list or anything, even as an attendee.
All right, well, we are gonna need David Rutherford.
Yep.
And Tybor.
Okay.
And Mr. Rutherford, will that you know who else? I'm sure there's more.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Just for purposes of our persons who will be participating, Tibor Latinich is our professional engineer and professional planner. I also arranged for Ms. Karuchi or her representative to transcribe this evening's meeting as well. And I know there are likely a number of interested parties. I don't know if it's the board's practice to, to bring them in as, as participants or, or just the witnesses. Is that the, how it works right now?
Um, we haven't really had many applications, but I guess you can examine your witness and then when it gets to cross from the public, we can let people in. Is that fine, Chris?
That's exactly how it should be done. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine, because I expect there, I don't know, but I believe there are likely a number of interested parties here this evening.
Okay.
I don't see Mr. Latinich yet. Oh, here we are.
I see him there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, then I'll proceed. For the record, my name is David L. Rutherford. I'm appearing tonight on behalf of the Hopper condominium association INC. The board will recall that we came, my client came before the board for a concept review a couple of years ago with respect to a project to supplement and repair existing crib tie retaining walls on the Hopper Ridge property. You heard that night and you'll hear again tonight, probably on a number of occasions, that this is a need, not a want. The existing railroad tie retaining walls have reached the end of their useful life and they need to be repaired and supplemented. And Mr. Latinich is gonna explain to you this evening how that's going to be done. And that having been said, the idea certainly is to create an aesthetically pleasing wall, but the, these walls are essentially functional. And you'll hear more about that this evening as we proceed. While there are some variances involved relating to the height of the walls and the proposed development in the riparian zone, I will submit to the board that this is, to a large extent, an engineering matter and not a planning matter. Mr. Latinich will explain to you that the retaining walls will essentially not be visible. And I think Ms. Buchi Carter agrees with this to a large extent. She can certainly speak for herself, please, please understand. But they will really not be visible to any great extent from beyond the property. They will be visible primarily to the residents and unit owners of Hopper Ridge. So while it certainly does affect the neighborhood to a certain extent, this is kind of a self-contained project that the association must do because these walls are, have reached the end of their useful life and, and as I indicated, need to be repaired and supplemented. I did file an affidavit of service or certification, I should say, of service and publication with Ms. Wondergem earlier today. And given and recognizing the limitations of the Zoom platform and the hour, my intention this evening is that Mr. Latinich qualified as an expert in the field of professional engineering, professional planning, and enable him to proceed in narrative format. I think the board's IT expert earlier spent a fair amount of time with Mr. Latinich to try to help with the screen sharing. So hopefully, we'll be able to present our exhibits in an efficient fashion that will enable the board to really understand what we're trying to explain and you'll understand the project a lot better. So unless the board has any further questions of me, I'd like to have Mr. Latinich sworn. And we'll proceed with his testimony.
Okay, just one point order. I guess Diane recused, so if she can be removed off the screen, just so it doesn't appear that you're still up on like the dais.
Bye.
Yeah, I'll make that happen.
Okay. It all matters, but we did lose Susan. She had something she had to go and take care of, so I guess she'll rejoin us.
So we're, we have five then, right now, correct? Five members? One, two.
Yeah.
Five members, okay. We, we want to proceed, Mr. Chairman. I think for a number of reasons, I'm, I won't be surprised if this matter does not conclude this evening. As I indicated, while it doesn't present tremendously complex planning issues, it is complex from an engineering perspective, and I know there are parties that are interested in it. So I have arranged for the reporter, as I indicated earlier, and I expect that we'll be able to provide a transcript to the board so that those members who were absent this evening will be able to read the transcript and render themselves eligible at, at a future meeting.
As well, listen to the recordings, yes.
Yes, that's fine, yeah. Much easier to read a transcript. I must say, though, listening to the recordings can be a bit tedious sometimes. In any event, yes, so with that having been said, we'll have Mr. Latinich, I'm looking for him. There he is, I'm sorry. He can be sworn, please.
Sure, Mr. Latinich is Chris Martin. How are you?
Okay, how are you?
Good, good. There you go. Can you raise your right hand? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
And for the record, give your full name and your business address, please.
Tibor Latinich, L-T-I-B-O-R, last name L-A-T-I-N-C-S-I-C-S. Principal engineer with firm of concrete associates, 29 Church Street, Ranby, New Jersey, where I'm located at the moment. Professional engineer license number 32444. Planner license number 3736. I have provided testimony for the planning board previously. And on a routine basis, before planning boards threw out. And on a routine basis, before planning boards throughout Northwest Bergen.
And your license, you're a professional engineer, correct?
Correct.
And you are a civil engineer ma, background?
I have a bachelor of the science and forestry from SUNY at Syracuse, a bachelor of science, civil engineering from NJIT, where I have and are currently serving as an adjunct professor.
And you've been involved in projects in terms of design and engineering of foundational and wall-related activities for soils and, you know, to prevent erosion and protection, correct?
Yes, Cockland Associates prepared the HD plans set before you. That included all the original survey work. We had the evidence of Johnson soils for soils investigation. And I have been project manager and in project engineer on development of this.
And so qualified tonight as a professional engineer. Go ahead, Mr. Rutherford.
Yeah, Mr. Martin, thank you for that. Mr. Latinich, you are also a licensed professional planner of the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Correct, license number 3736.
And you've been qualified in the past before planning and zoning boards in New Jersey as an expert in the field of professional planning?
Yes, including the original plan.
Okay, your voice, I don't know that, what the issue is, your voice, I don't know if anyone else is experiencing this, your voice is kind of fading in and out a little bit. Can everyone else hear Mr. Latinich, okay?
He does fade in and out.
Yeah.
The microphone closing.
Thank you. And I asked Mr. Hanson, I just want to ensure that my court reporter is also, she's been logged in, so she can transcribe this.
She's able to listen in, I can bring her in as panelist.
I don't need her as a panelist, I just wanted to make sure she could hear, that's all.
What's her name?
Rhonda.
He put something on the screen saying she's having trouble hearing.
Fine. Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Does she, I think she's having trouble hearing.
Yeah.
Mr. Latinich.
Yeah.
Alright.
What can I do at my end? Is that better?
Yeah, that's a little better.
That's better.
Okay, then Dylan was very helpful this afternoon in assisting me with ways. I have a series of PDFs. If, am I allowed to share the screen?
Tibor, we're not, we can't hear you now. And I have a threshold question for Mr. Rutherford. Mr. Rutherford, he's been qualified as a professional engineer. You also want to qualify as a professional planner?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and based upon your voir dire, he's also qualified as a professional planner. Now the more, now the more troubling issue. The court reporter, an audience member, and I am, and I think the chair are having trouble hearing him.
Okay.
Is that any better now?
Any better?
Yeah, a little bit better. If you want to, you could dial in with a number that will attach it to your video.
That would be on my iPhone?
Yeah, you could do it from any phone. But if you click down in the left-hand corner by where the microphone is, there's a little up arrow, and it says, switch to phone audio. And it will give you a phone number and a code to dial in with.
Left-hand corner of where?
Of your screen.
Bottom of the screen.
Meeting screen. It's got a little picture of a microphone and under it says mute, and to the right of it's a little up arrow. If you click on it, it says, switch to phone audio. You click on that, a white window will pop up with a phone number, the meeting ID and a participant ID.
Okay, switch to phone audio, okay? And I dial in?
Yep, and it will attach your phone audio to your, to your video.
Is that better?
That's better.
Amazing technology. Okay.
All right, Mr. Latinich, just a few preliminary questions. You filed this application on behalf of our client undercover of your letter dated May 21, 2020, is that correct?
Correct.
And you included a number of exhibits in there. Mr. Martin, does, does the board consider the application and related materials to be part of the record?
He stepped away for a second.
Okay, then we'll, we'll circle around, then we'll come back to that. Let's move forward. Mr. Latinich, perhaps you can give the board, just for the moment, just a very overview of this, of this application, and then we'll start getting into the existing conditions, description of the property and what's being proposed.
Okay, and I would like to share this screen with plan sheet number one, which I've just opened as a PDF. Does everybody else have sheet one of eight in front of them? I will take that as a no. Everybody have sheet one of eight in front of them?
Sheet one of what?
Sheet one, plan sheet one of eight.
Yes.
You.
Yeah.
And and is my curse, who mounted it? I, I shared it or Dylan shared it? I, I'm moving the cursor left to right.
You didn't share it yet. You have to share your screen.
I have to share my screen?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm hitting share screen. And then I go to my PDF. Am I sharing the screen now?
No, it's not showing up.
It's not. Okay.
You, you have to hit share screen twice. You hit share screen when it's green at the bottom, and then you have to hit it again when the small window pops up.
Okay, Dylan, could you bounce, could you put up sheet one of eight?
I'm trying to open it, hold on.
Good. I just shared it, is it?
Mine's revised sheet one. Okay, I'm going to share mine. Everybody seeing now?
Here we go. Yes.
Okay, and I'm moving the, my cursor back and forth. Everybody can see that?
Oh.
No, because I'm sharing it, you're not sharing it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, well, okay, this is the plan sheet one of eight. And going right into this, the 36 Hopper Ridge townhouse are located on lot three, block 4104. The overall site is 10.3 acres at the end of Dorr Avenue. And the original planning board primary approval dated February 15, 1983. The final site plan was approved in post-construction in 1990. It is located in the R1A zone. There is a key map in the upper right-hand corner. If you could pan out, Dylan, in the upper right-hand corner, there is a key map showing the proximity of the 10.3 acre site, to Prospect Avenue, Cedar Ave to the north, Irving to the east and so forth. Major, a major feature of the site are three on-stream or on-storm sewer detention basins through which a tributary of Hoakus Brook flows. Dylan, if you could pan out to the body of the plan sheet. And as a practical matter, the, and those three detention basins are located, generally speaking, in the center of the site and clustered about the detention basin is taking advantage of the view are the 36 townhouses in clusters of four. There are nine buildings each with four units in them. These townhouses are held up by landscape tie crib retaining walls, which I'm tracing. We have named these detention ponds, the lower detention pond, the middle detention pond, and the upper detention pond. And these townhouses are perched above these detention ponds atop dated landscape tie crib walls. And I emphasize the term landscape tie, they are not railroad tie, but they are southern yellow pine, CCA-treated landscape timbers, not railroad ties. And there are crib walls, meaning that, think of it as Lincoln Logs. The wall system actually extends 11 feet behind the face of the wall. So there are numerous challenges, and yes, they are past their useful life, and we'll be presenting some photographs. But there are some major challenges to the project and the replacement is a need, not a want. They are past their useful life. In some cases, rotting, buckling and separating. The walls are between a rock and a hard place. The rock is, are the on-stream, on-storm sewer detention ponds. And behind the wall, just a few feet behind the wall, is the private Hopper Ridge asbestos concrete sewer pipe that carries the sewage from the various units to the main trunk line, which then connects to the 16-inch ridgwood line that runs through the middle of the site. So working around the ponds and not damaging the asbestos concrete sewer pipe is a major challenge. Adding to the challenge is that these, in some cases, for example, if we take 43 Carolane, this wall extends, the wall system, again, think of it as a Lincoln log retaining wall, backfilled with crushed stone. The wall system extends 11 feet behind the wall, behind the face of the wall. In there, you have the sewer line, and in some cases, the individual patios or decks, as it may be, overlap the wall system. So these are some major challenges. Pardon the expression, the gorilla in the room is the access. It's just a very, very difficult location to access. In between the townhouse units and the ponds, we have slopes to contend with the ponds themselves. And working around the, the units, the sewer line, the patios, the decks, landscaping, etc. Added to this is the part of the project, separate and distinct from the walls, is the dredging of the ponds. That's more of a want than a need, but when as a practical matter, to construct the walls, there will be some necessary dredging. By the time one is mobilized, lowered the ponds, erosion control measures, access, restoration, and all those elements, it is good planning to accommodate for the dredging of the ponds. And the want or the need increases as you go downstream. The drainage area to the ponds is approximately 67 acres. It is the Ridgewood municipal stormwater system going from Cedar Avenue to the north pond. The north pond traps most of the silt. The up, the upper or the north pond then drains to middle pond. Less silt is carried over, then there's a 48-inch culvert under Dorr Ave, which then drains to the lower detention pond. And then ultimately, that drains to a tributary of Hoakus Brook. As a practical matter, these detention ponds are oversized for the actual Hopper Ridge project. They provide, it's what I call it, a regional benefit for the entire 67 to 70 acres of up slope areas that drain to the, to the three detention ponds. Then added, added to these actual physical and engineering challenges or environmental challenges that, in that there's a riparian zone associated with these three detention ponds, even though they're man-made. And actually, the original ditch is indicated on plan sheet one, I'm tracing it. It started from Cedar Avenue, meandered through the site, and drained north to south. That original ditch remnants are still on-site, it is now dry and was replaced by the, by the three man-made detention ponds that provide an aesthetic and stormwater management benefit. That's an overview of the site and the challenges. What is, the repair of the, of the walls is absolute need. And what is proposed, and if we can pull up plan sheet two, get started here, or, or actually, Dylan, if you don't mind, if we can mount the photographs, I can walk through the photographs, because I think the visual is very important.
Mr. Rutherford, do you want to mark the photographs collectively as?
Yeah, I wanted, yeah, thank you, Mr. Martin. I wanted to move back just a moment ago, Mr. Latinich, you were, you were referring just in your testimony just a few moments ago to sheet one of the plan set, correct? And that's the plan set. I think you said it consists of eight pages and it was last revised on August 10, 2020, is that correct?
That is correct, and sheet one of eight is an overall existing conditions plan sheet. And I neglected to mention that the cumulative length of those landscape tie crib walls is 600 feet long with heights approaching 12.6 feet in selective locations. It's a variable height wall. It's a variable height wall. And if we could proceed through the photographs.
Okay, so just to go back, just to keep the record neat, please. Mr. Martin, we'll mark as Exhibit A-one, the plan set, the eight-page plan set revised through August tenth, two thousand twenty, if you please. And the photographs we can mark as A-two. Mr. Latincich, I looked online earlier on the Village website, I think there are twenty-eight photographs, am I, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Martin, and A-two, if you please, will be the plan set. This was filed with the application, twenty-eight photos as Exhibit A-two.
Right, A-two are the photographs, David, and A-one is the plan set.
That's correct, thank you.
Okay, is there, is there a way I could scroll through the photographs or we'll just take these one by one?
If we could, if we could figure out how to get you to share your screen, we could do that. Otherwise, we need Dylan's assistance, I believe.
Okay, I'm hitting share screen, you cannot, well, okay, someone else is sharing, I.
I can stop sharing, I'll stop sharing, you can share, there, you try sharing.
Okay, now, I'm sharing and I lost the photographs. Let me see if I can pull mine up. Please bear with me. Okay, does everybody see the photograph?
No, you have to hit share again. Share screen, choose the photograph and then share again.
See, the problem. Okay, I hit share screen.
Yep, and now you'll see a layout of what you can share that's open on your computer. Choose the photograph one, and then on the bottom right-hand corner, hit share.
Okay, the problem is the toolbar for sharing disappears on me, let me see if I can find that.
It's part of the window, it's no longer part of the toolbar, it's part of that window, and the right-hand corner of that window says share.
Can you write view of this window, it says share. It does not. Okay, I have, I have photograph number one up, no one else has that up.
No, you want me to go back to my share?
Let me give this one more try here. Bye, thank you for your patience.
Can I ask a question of the chair? Richard, a resident, I believe, just wrote a message on the screen. He wanted to be able to see the pictures, are they on the website anywhere?
Dylan, are those posted?
Yeah, they're all posted on the Village website under Planning Applications.
Okay, or they've been there, I guess what, since other?
Okay, Dylan, if you could, please share the photograph side.
Latincich, maybe what you could do is say what you want to say about each photo and then, and then Dylan can go to the next one.
Okay, unfortunately, my, I, I'm not seeing the photographs now.
Go to your Zoom window and it should be the, me sharing the photo.
Okay, she, photograph number one, is that we can see it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, photograph number one, I'm looking directly down Dour Ave. We are looking west to east, photograph, and it just indicates Dour Ave. The, I'm pointing to the low point, this is the middle detention basin to the north, the lower detention basin to the right, there's a cross culvert here, next photograph, please, number two. Again, this is the low point of the roadway, there's a culvert under here, connecting the two, the, the middle and lower detention pond, next. Next photograph, please. Okay, this is looking across the middle detention pond to the retaining wall, obscured with the townhouses perched above the current retaining walls above the middle detention pond. Next photograph, just to get everybody a sense for the site. Next photograph, please. Okay, this is looking southerly down the middle detention pond. You can see, I'm pointing to the two-tier crib retaining wall. There's the lower tier and the upper tier. And these are the stockade fences about the patios or decks to the immediate rear of the townhouse unit. And they are as close as two or three feet to the top of this wall. There is a sewer line right behind this wall, next photograph, please. This is, again, this is looking at the retaining wall of, behind Carolane, the two-tier wall and the slope leading down to the middle detention pond. This is a stockade fence about a patio or a deck to the rear of a townhouse unit. Next photograph, please. And again, this is to give a sense, a sense of the site. Again, looking directly down the retaining wall, the, the lower tier, the upper tier. The sewer line is running right here, and this is a stockade fence around the patio or deck. And you can start to understand the challenge, because this wall actually extends, the wall system extends eleven feet behind the face of the lower wall. Next photograph, please. Thank you for your help here. Again, more, now, these photographs are actually four years old from when we started this project. One thing is very evident in that the quality of the landscape ties of the lower wall was much better than the upper wall, because the upper wall is in much worse condition in terms of deteriorating. Next photograph, please. Again, more to the same, next photograph, you can see some of the deterioration, this is actually four years ago. It's much worse now, keep going, next photograph, please. This is looking north, it gives you a better sense of the scale of the wall. As you proceed to the north, the wall gets taller. These are, each of these ties are five and a half inches, the two ties are roughly a foot, keep going. This is interesting, this is actually a twenty-four inch maple growing at the top of the wall. This is between units forty-three and forty-seven. Clear, this, this wall was finished, I believe, about nineteen eighty-eight. So it gives you the sense of how long it takes a twenty-four inch tree to grow if it gets adequate sunlight. Next photograph. And pretty amazing, it's starting to buckle the wall now. It's, it's pretty amazing that it's not buckled the wall. Photograph number eleven, this is an angle point in the wall as we go from the middle detention pond to the upper detention pond. This is number forty-seven Carolane, this is sort of ground zero, the most challenging in terms of the wall height. Right here, the wall is twelve point six feet tall. Very challenging access, topography. This tree is one of the trees that needs to be cut down. There is no disturbance to the vegetation atop the walls. I am, I do have some recommendation, for example, this tree is a real safety issue, but that is separate and distinct from the wall construction. Next photograph, please. This is the actual, the right angle turn where right behind forty-seven Carolane, we are transitioning to the upper or the northern detention pond. This is where the walls narrowed down directly across from the pool. Next photograph, please, again, this is a very problematic area, and there is a sewer manhole, right? Actually, if you go back to that prior photograph, there is a sewer manhole right on, right behind this wall, there's a sewer line and the man, right back here, there's a, there's a sewer manhole where the sewer also is running parallel to this wall, makes a turn parallel to this wall, makes another turn, very sensitive situation. Next photograph, please. And this is where the, the ponds and the walls narrowed down. I've nicknamed this the Straits of Gibraltar. This is the wall holding up the pool and the common element. This is the wall holding up the Carolane units. There's a corrugated metal pipe culvert under this. This is just scrap metal here, but there's actually a corrugated metal culvert under this that is pretty much clogged and needs to be repaired. Next photograph, please. This is the wall behind forty-three to forty-nine Carolane and the upper detention pond. And you can see that there's a narrow band of land in between the two. And next photograph, please. And again, here the wall is effectively ten to twelve foot tall. It terminates in a concrete wall at the north end. And again, this is just to give a sense of these walls. Again, these, this is a privacy stockade fence, and you can see the small separation between the privacy fence, which there is a deck right behind. And that sewer line again is running parallel to the top of this wall. What we are proposing is, in the repair and to supplement this wall, is in front of this wall would be a GeoGrid reinforced split-faced textured concrete modular block wall, specific manufacturer is Keystone. This new wall would be twelve foot in front of this wall, in, just inside the waterline. And we will slope backfill the area between the, the walls and, and at a three-on-one slope to the new wall. And we'll, what we call up the additional plan sheets will provide additional detail. Next photograph, please. Again, this is looking again down the face of the wall. And when the question comes up, why can't we replace the wall in its current location? Imagine you're standing at the base of this wall, you would have to excavate into this embankment. Behind that embankment is a sewer line, patios, decks, fences, and that would all come tumbling down. So what is to repair the wall is a supplemental wall in front, twelve foot in front of the upper wall to allow, so we do not have to excavate into this embankment. You can appreciate challenges in that regard. Next photograph, please. Again, 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 imagine you're, and, and you're able to appreciate this, you have to stand down here and look at, up at the top of this wall. And you have a sense of the condition of this wall, you can see ties are moving, they're buckling, they're deteriorating. And to excavate into this would put the sewer line and all these physical improvements in danger. We do not want this project to morph into a sewer replacement. That is, that has, obviously would be a significant challenge. Next photograph, please. And this is just looking down through the narrows towards the middle detention pond. Keep going, next photograph, please. And you, but you can see, again, these, these photographs are six years old, but you can see the movement in the ties, the deteriorating. Photo number nineteen is looking east across the upper detention pond. That is the discharge, corrugated metal pipe storm sewer discharge of the municipal storm sewer system into the upper detention pond. And that vegetation about that is a bamboo grove in that locale. Next photograph, please. This is, this photograph number twenty is a photograph of the two-tier wall, which supports the pool and the clubhouse. And you can understand the challenges of just getting to this location. And we'll discuss the access when we review the plans. Next photograph, please. And thank you for everybody's patience, if people have seen enough photographs, cut me off. We do have the lower wall to, more of the same, next photograph. Okay, this is the lower sawtooth, it, it's a zigzag pattern which mimics the footprint of the townhouses. And it is, and shows the lower detention pond in the foreground. This is a lower, this is maximal height of this wall is six feet. And however, the, this slope, this is almost a fifty-degree slope. It is difficult to walk here, let alone work to replace these walls. The low wall by nature of its sawtooth construction is in better condition than the upper two walls. Again, we have the same situation of, as sewer line right behind this wall. The stockade fences are the privacy, privacy fences for patios and decks. You can see they come up almost right to the wall. Next photograph, please. And again, this is looking northerly, you have a sense of, of the slope, we have absence of vegetation, actually, the slope is so steep, precious little grows there. And we, and we will be discussing the tree removal and the supplemental plantings as part of the project. Next photograph, please. Again, this is looking at, looking northerly, and you can see how much more attractive the lower detention pond is just from a water quality perspective. Due to the silt settling out in the upper detention pond, whatever remains in the middle detention pond, that is all to the benefit of the lower detention pond and ultimately the downstream watercourses and the Hoakus Brook to which this system ultimately drains. Again, you have, you have a sense here, this is a privacy fence. Right behind here is a patio or a deck, and yes, a sewer line. Next photograph, please. And yes, there you go, there is a sewer, a manhole. This is actually right in front of the wall where it terminates, so in this case, the sewer line is running underneath the wall. This photograph is four years old, but you can see the condition of that landscape tie. Next photograph, please. Um, next photograph, please. Uh, this is the outlet control structure, which is basically a two-foot wi- wide weir. This is the upstream end of the outlet control structure for the lower, the, uh, detention pond. Uh, next photograph, please. And that is the outlet end of the, um, detention, uh, basin. You can see typically there's a flow out under, only under major rainfall events. Um, and yes, two thousand and eighteen was our wettest year on record. So there was probably a more continuous flow, um, during two thousand and eighteen, early two thousand and nineteen. But on a typical day, there is no outflow from these detention ponds. And I believe there's one last photograph. That is, again, a view of the outlet control structure. This is the, the berm. You can see the absence of vegetation. Um, Dylan, if you could, if we can go back to plan sheet number one, I would just, just quickly review, you know, what we've reviewed visually, um, on plan sheet number one. Okay, so, um, again, starting at the, the lower detention pond, this is the outlet control structure. This is, this is the outlet control structure. Hopper Ridge owns this wooded area below. Um, this is the sawtooth lower wall I was referring to. Thankfully, there's no wall with this, with this upper unit. Then we have Durar Avenue, the cross culvert. We have the middle detention pond where we had, uh, the wall. That is that, that angled corner I was discussing. Um, directly across is the pool and the clubhouse with, I'm tracing the wall. Um, that is being held up. Um, this wall is a hundred and thirty feet long. Um, this is the primary wall. Um, that is, uh, three hundred and fifty feet long. Uh, we have the upper, uh, detention pond, um, with the storm sewer discharge, uh, from the min- village storm sewer system, which runs from Cedar Avenue, um, to, um, the storm sewer runs from, uh, Cedar Avenue. There is a silt chamber here, um, to collect the silt. Um, and then it runs to this discharge point, which was a photograph. We have the benefit of an access road here, which I'm tracing. That access road, uh, there's a curb cut, a concrete apron that leads to an access road, which also doubles as emergency access. And yes, major sixteen, fifteen-inch bestis concrete sewer line, which is a trunk line for the village, runs, uh, through an easement. This, which is with, this was the former Hopper Avenue that was vacated as part of the overall project. The private Hopper Ridge, a storm sewer system ultimately connects to this fifteen-inch ACP pipe. Um, so, um, uh, Dylan, if you could, uh, bring up plan sheet two. And plan sheets two, three, and four focus on, on portions of the site. Um, this is again, plan sheet, uh, two. Um, and again, we have our access roadway. Um, and we are, in burnt orange is the, uh, proposed wall. Um, and access to the project will be via Durar Avenue, certainly, and the access roadway leading out to Cedar Avenue. And we are clearly, and will be, I'll be detailing soil movement, soil movement quantities. Um, we have a major soil movement application filed, but we identify stockpile areas, whether it's for dredging. Um, the walls are backfilled with crushed stone. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll provide a summary of, of, um, quantities. But for example, the replacement wall is in, is sixty-two hundred square feet. That is one hundred and sixty pallets of concrete block, which vary from the, uh, sixty-nine to seventy-seven pounds per block. We need a place to put those hundred and sixty pallets over a period of time. One, one question we anticipate is certainly the, the period of construction. Uh, this is a three-month project with good weather conditions. Um, and we will need stockpile areas to supply the project. Um, uh, Dylan, if you could pan out to the overall project, I will identify stockpile areas. Uh, one stockpile or stockyard, stockpile area is I'm tracing. It is the, uh, south, uh, excuse me, northeast corner of the site at the end of the access road. Um, there is a wooded area, um, with paccasandra ground cover. We identify a, a stockpile, stockyard area with a limit of disturbance with erosion control measures. Um, and, uh, it's about twenty-seven hundred square feet. And the second stockpile area is immediately adjacent right at the end of the access roadway, uh, of the, uh, northern or the upper, uh, detention pond. Um, this is, if you could pan out, there's a cross-section, uh, detail of the proposed Keystone wall. And I'm pointing it to it now. Uh, Dylan, if you could, uh, zero in on that. Um, and I think everybody's familiar with the modular segmental concrete block walls. Um, there's different manufacturers, Keystone, Allen Block, uh, and others. Um, and this is technology which really became available in the mid-eighties. It is, um, I'll say, it was unfortunate that landscape ties were, um, utilized for these walls. Nobody has built, um, major retaining walls with landscape ties since the late eighties, early nineties due to the advent of the modular block walls. Um, significantly superior. Um, Keystone was probably the best known. It's one of the many manufacturers. Um, and, uh, and the reason, uh, we have specified them is that they are the only pin system. They patented the pins. Uh, the other block manufacturers rely on grues and other methods to interlock. The pins are still the best. Um, and I, probably people are very familiar with what I call the original Keystone, which is a waffle weave. You see them everywhere. Um, there are, as they have responded to the marketplace, and there's many aesthetic options available now. Beveled edges, Victorian edges. Um, in this case, we have specified a standard compact block split face, so has a textured finish to it. Um, and a blended color, meaning it's a swirled color, uh, brown and gray, a- and very attractive. Um, ultimately, I think that's an aesthetic decision uh, on the part of the homeowners association. I have recommended Pecan, which is, uh, very popular due to it's just, it's very aesthetic. Uh, it's a blend of swirled, uh, brown and gray and blends in with landscape. A key element with these walls is the GeoGrid, uh, which is the, uh, GeoGrid Deadman. It, it really is very similar to the Lincoln Log crib walls, but significantly better. And that is really the key element of these retaining wall systems with proper backfill and compa- and compaction. Um, particularly due to the location of these walls. Yes, there'll be heavy equipment here, um, excavating equipment, skid steers to, um, move the pallets. But ultimately, all sixty-two hundred blocks have to be picked up, put in position by hand, and secured. Um, and Chris will, will certainly advise us. It's all about the quality of the fill and the compaction behind the wall. Um, the current wall has no fall protection whatsoever. Uh, we specify a, a, um, a split rail fence atop the wall with, uh, for fall protection, which is a significant, uh, improvement. And there'll be a three-on-one slope, one vertical to three horizontal or basically a thirty-degree slope from the, uh, new, from the, uh, wall repair, the new wall to the existing wall. So the, um, and, and twelve foot in front of the, um, existing, uh, wall system. Uh, Dylan, if you can go to plan sheet number three, which is similar to plan sheet number two, but we zero in on the wa- on the, on the construction side even more.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And I'm now tracing, um, this is the, I'm tracing the wall repair. Um, and this wall, the middle wall is two hundred and seventy-six feet long. And you can see it has curves, which are, one, aesthetic. Two, these wall systems work really well with curves. Um, and, uh, they're, they're also, uh, structurally more stable with curves. Right angle curves are always, uh, right angles are, are, are acute angles are always a problem and a challenge. Um, and yes, these walls, I should have mentioned it. I'm sure we have a detail on this plan. Now, like, the walls have a batter, uh, one inch for every eight inches of vertical rise. The wall has a back batter, uh, which again, uh, adds to the aesthetic of the wall, uh, particularly with the blended block. A, a vertical wall always appears as if it's leaning forward. No, no matter, it's just, it, and really, it, it's a optical illusion. Um, these walls have an inherent batter, uh, built into the wall system. Um, so this, the middle wall is, uh, two hundred and seventy-six feet long. Uh, the upper wall is, uh, one hundred and seventy-four, uh, feet long. Next plan sheet will show the, uh, lower wall. But let me just, while we're, okay, the, the maximum height of the, this wall has a maximum height of, uh, ten feet, um, to the immediate rear of these, um, of forty-three to, uh, forty-nine Carolane. Uh, in this location, we are asking for a variance for, uh, for your wall height, um, um, ordinance. Uh, let me take a step back. We are asking for, I, I, I believe this is ultimately classified an amended soil movement, uh, excuse me, an amended site plan. We are amending the appro- the original, uh, nineteen eighty-three site plan approval. We're modifying it. Um, and yes, we have a major soil movement application, uh, associated with this, uh, amended site plan application. Uh, and I'll get into soil movement quantities. Uh, but to be clear, we are, the current wall is twelve point six feet tall at its highest, uh, in this area. And again, this is this, our pinch point here, the most, where the gorilla is the largest, the Strait of Gibraltar. We have the highest wall, the most difficult access with a sewer manhole right here and a deck right behind the wall. This is where our, our largest cha- our most significant challenge is. The proposed wall will, it's, uh, and again, this wall goes from zero height at the end. It transitions up to twelve point three feet here, uh, approximately ten feet here, and then transitions down to zero here.
Mr. Lettich, we're not seeing your arrow, I don't think. I'm not seeing it anyway.
Um, okay, um, people, I have my arrow pointed at the southern limit.
I see it now, thank you. Okay, there we are, I see it now, thank you. Go back and say that again, please. I don't want to make you repeat, but.
That's my arrow that I'm pointing. It's not hit.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay, I am, but my, my arrow is at the south end of the middle detention basin wall. At this point, the wall is, is meeting grade, zero height. As we, if you remember those photographs that we saw, the wall climbs in height. This area here, the wall currently is twelve point six feet tall. We are proposing a twelve point three foot higher wall here. Um, I'm asking for a foot variance to, there's always field conditions and field modifications. The wall is approximately ten feet tall here, and then transitions down back to zero where we meet grade in front of the clubhouse. I go to the north wall, uh, which is one hundred and seventy-four feet long. And interestingly, the upper wall and the lower wall are the same exact length, both a hundred and seventy-four feet. Surprised us that we double-checked it and triple-checked it. This wall is a hundred and seventy-four feet, starting at zero, climbing up to ten feet, um, and then transitioning to meet that, the concrete retaining wall, uh, at the north end of forty-nine, uh, Carolane that we're meeting. But we have wall heights identified here. Um, now, an element of this is, yes, we are, uh, we are going to replace this, uh, culvert. And we are, are curving these walls. And as you remember from the prior, it's pretty much that very narrow, this is all backfilled with crushed stone. We are backfilling this area and landscaping this area. Um, and yes, but ultimately, this gray shaded area is portions of the existing detention ponds that we are filling in to accommodate this wall construction. Um, there's an obligation to compensate for this area by expanding the pond. The obligation is twofold. Uh, DP has a general policy that you do not fill oak, state open waters. And even though that these are man-made detention ponds, they are classified state open waters. And while they're very robustly designed, um, they, uh, they provide a detention, uh, capacity. And that detention capacity is directly related to the surface area of the detention ponds. So there's an obligation to, whatever we're filling in, expand an equivalent area. And that is the boo- the deep blue shaded area where we are expanding primarily proposing to expand the upper detention pond. Um, and there's a number of benefits to that. Um, certainly, the upper detention pond is the most effective in terms of stormwater detention and collecting the silt and debris that comes down the municipal system to the. and collecting the silt and debris that comes down the municipal system, which is a benefit of the lower, the middle and lower detention pond and downstream watercourses. And yes, the topography is most favorable and the access is most favorable to expand the upper detention pond. For example, if you're familiar with the site, could we expand the upper detention pond here? But this is a fairly steep, I'm pointing my cursor to the lower portion of the middle detention pond. One could legitimately ask, well, why can't we expand the pond here? The answer is, we have, there's a steep slope here. And also, now we are building retaining walls or to hold up that steep slope, and we have more than enough retaining walls to build. If we can go to Plan Sheet Number Four, that we will focus on the lower wall. And I note that it's nine-thirty, how much more time do we have? Okay, I have my cursor pointed at the outlet control structure. Can everybody see that? I'm wiggling my cursor. And I'm tracing the proposed location of the Keystone wall. And again, we have our construction detail and cross-section here. And this, this wall has its own challenges in that, this is a very steep slope to work on. We are indicating a circular access around the townhouse unit. And this has been discussed with the homeowners association, which is a decision they have to make. And basically, it's really a time factor. You can understand, you are transporting in crushed stone, concrete block, and yes, there'll be a skid steamer. Because once we, once this base course is placed and we're up three or four courses, the actual wall construction becomes a horror road. We are constructing a level plane here. So the actual, which is, the twelve-foot separation is important. And it is, and from the corner of the sawtooth wall to the back of the wall is twelve feet. And what gets interesting here is that we have to take into consideration the batter of the wall. That becomes significant on the, as the walls get taller. Dylan, if you could pan into the wall, let me point some things out here. This, the, everybody can see my cursor?
No, just tell me where to point.
Okay, I'm pointing at the outer orange line. Okay, do I have the ability to point my cursor? People see my cursor?
No, because you're not sharing.
How about not? Okay, all right, all right, you see this outer, drop, drop your cursor down, down to the outer orange line, front of, in, okay, that's limited disturbance, go one orange line in. That's the toe of the wall, that's the base of the wall. But we have to take the batter of the wall for the variable height of the wall into consideration. So the bold line is where the top of the wall winds up when we take the batter of the wall into consideration, which is twelve foot in front of the sawtooth existing wall on that steep slope. So this is some challenging construction here. And not to, not really a planning board consideration, but let me just point out for the record, in this project, what we've done is we've reached out to the manufacturer directly, Keystone. Their corporate offices are in Minnesota. These block are actually franchised out on a state level. You pay for the mold, you become an official Keystone distributor. So we have the benefit of working with the home office. And we asked them for a list of their A-list contractors. If they were, if they were, they, the manufacturer was recommending a contractor, and they don't want to have any problems, who would they recommend? And they provided us a list of four to five contractors who specialize in such construction. And we have already distributed these plans, because a wise engineer listens to contractors and we share the experience. And we incorporate their comments and design into this application. So that, there's a lot going on here. And one of the things of this is, if we have a circular access around this wall, it cuts the time in half. If you're transporting material in and out, you don't have to back up. We're going to limit the backup beepers on the skid steers and the equipment, and the project will move more smoothly within that three-month window that we have given ourselves. Now, we, just to, and I know it's nine-thirty-five, in terms, we have a soil movement application. I'm going to throw some statistics and numbers. We've had, we've had a visual review, we've looked at the plans, I think everybody has, hopefully has a feel for the site now. Just to put some numbers on the record, the lower wall is one-hundred-and-seventy-four feet long, maximum height of eight feet. Your ordinance calls out four feet maximum height. If it's taller than four feet, you ask to tier the walls. We are proposing a single wall, because it's a better wall system. Tiered walls typically are problematic. But this wall, the lower wall, has face footage of seventeen-hundred square feet. The middle wall is two-hundred-and-seventy-six feet long, a maximum height of twelve-point-three-three feet, face footage of two-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-five square feet. The upper wall is also one-hundred-and-seventy-four feet, maximum height of ten feet, and fourteen-hundred-and-three square feet. So the total face footage of these walls is five-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-eight square feet of wall with four-hundred-and-sixteen cap block, which is one-hundred-and-sixty pallets of block. In terms of soil movement, and there's different types of soil movements associated here. The biggest, there is, these walls are backfilled with crushed stone, three-quarter-inch clean crushed stone, which is an inherent construction element of these walls, as well as the drainage element. There's, and the leveling pad, you fill the blocks with core. I have an expression, crushed stone is the duct tape of site engineering. For our leveling pad, there's sixty-four cubic yards of crushed stone, nine-hundred-and-seventy-three cubic yards of crushed stone for drainage behind the walls. Another eighty-five cubic yards of crushed stone to fill the cores of the block wall, so on, so forth. Fourteen-hundred-and-forty-one cubic yards of crushed stone are approximately eighty truckloads, the eighteen cubic yards per truck, will be imported over a three-month period. Then there's the select fill soil for the wall repair. Five-hundred cubic yards for the lower wall, about twenty-eight truckloads. But the middle wall is fifty-eight cubic yards, excuse me, a thousand-and-thirty-five cubic yards or fifty-eight truckloads. The upper wall is four-hundred-and-fifty-eight cubic yards or twenty-five truckloads. Total of round numbers, two-thousand cubic yards or a hundred-and-ten truckloads of soil being imported over a three-month period. Then we have the dredging, which is, there will be obviously essential dredging at the base of the walls to get down to solid bearing material. And there will be courses of block below grade, a minimum of three courses of block below grade on top of a, and if you look at the detail, lower right-hand corner of the plan sheet, you could see there's a crushed stone leveling pad, three courses of block minimum buried, crushed stone behind the wall for drainage, et cetera, et cetera. But then there's a pond dredging, and a lot of erosion control measures. The ponds will be lowered to construct the walls, mobilization, stockpile areas. It would be good planning to dredge these ponds. I can't speak for the homeowners association, but it's, I believe ultimately it's going to be a budget and expense decision. But in terms of soil movement, if the upper pond was dredged just one foot, that's one-hundred-and-sixty-three cubic yards of material. But clearly, it's going to be at least two feet of dredging, three-hundred-and-twenty-six cubic yards of material to be dredged. It would be stockpiled on site, because that is wet material and is very difficult to truck wet soil for any number of reasons. So it would be stockpiled on site to allow it to dry out, and I believe the village has experience in such matters. The middle pond, if it was two feet, was dredged, that's another five-hundred-and-forty-two cubic yard, yards. And the lower pond, which is the largest pond, in least need of dredging, is another thousand cubic yards of dredging with a two-foot dredge. That in round numbers is one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty cubic yards of soil movement, or a hundred-and-eight cubic yards. And that material would be exported, the crushed stone, the select fill behind the walls, the concrete block, that is all import, the dredging would be export. And again, these are different steps in the construction sequence over a three-month period. If you total everything up, and not, I don't want to alarm people, but let's just put the number on the record, crushed stone, the concrete block, the select fills, the dredging, if you total all of that up, five-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-six cubic yards of soil movement, or if you extrapolate that, the truckloads, three-hundred-and-twenty-six truckloads of materials. So those are just statistics, which ultimately, unfortunately for the homeowners association, ultimately translates to dollars. I'm sure everybody's wondering, the total project cost, this is absolutely north of four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of construction. And that's without the dredging, which is just the wall construction is north of four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And modifications and variations come in jumps of fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. When you say, well, what happens if I, you know, and we did an alternative analysis. And it, and part of a large degree of that is just the sheer size and length of the walls, and of course, the access. You know, there's an industry-recognized standard per face foot, but when you have to carry the block in, those industry standards go by the wayside. Plans do detail tree removal. If we go to the lower Plan Sheet Three, to the left of the title block, I think we have Plan Sheet Four up. Can we go to Plan Sheet Three? Okay, if you scroll down, there's a tree replacement schedule there. Drop down to the lower margin. Okay, then move, move to the right, lower right-hand corner. Okay, tree removal. Sixteen trees, which are indicated by the bold red axes on the plan sheet. Sixteen trees are being removed, twenty-six trees are being proposed. And there's an emphasis on native indigenous riparian zone species, specifically, and looking right at the chart, October glories, very popular, very adaptable trees. Actually, there's one Norway spruce to block the line of sight from neighbors, black willows, swamp oaks, pin oaks. These are a total of twenty-six trees. And this is open to, you know, any input from the village professionals. You can see I like October glory maples, I expect twenty of them. We can certainly have a greater variation. But there are sixteen trees to be removed. There is no tree removal adjacent to the any of the townhouse units on top of the wall. So, and I know it's nine-thirty-five. Going to my transmittal again, and I think we've provided a summary here. I want to finish up with specific approvals being requested. Specific approvals being requested is an amended site plan approval to repair and supplement the dated landscape tie crib walls, which were originally approved. A major soil movement application, which, and I summarized the quantities previously. We are asking for a variance of Section one-ninety dash one-twenty-four F-three-C-three. In short, the ordinance limits walls four foot. If they're taller than four foot, they should be tiered, not to exceed twelve feet. The existing wall is twelve-point-six feet tall. We are asking for the wall to be twelve-point-three-three. I would ask for a foot variance just for field conditions. I emphasize, that is only for a length of forty-two feet or six-point-seven percent of the six-hundred-and-twenty-four-foot length of wall. And that is, to be clear, but we are asking for a variance or continuation of an existing variance condition. We are asking for a waiver or variance of the riparian zone standards, which prohibits construction in the riparian zone. But the ordinance has a provision for exceptions if there's undue hardship, and that's certainly the case here. the case here. We have an additional request here. This project, DEP has jurisdiction here. They have jurisdiction over the riparian zone, which is, if you're looking at Plan Sheet 3 of 8, the riparian zone is that green line identified as riparian zone. And what's interesting from a legal perspective, that is drawn not from the existing edge of the ponds, but where the ditch was in 1983. So, for example, the DEP riparian zone extends through the middle of Unit 43, whether we like it or not. There's no vegetation in that living room, so there's limited jurisdiction. But the riparian zone is measured and be an extensive pre-application meetings with DEP, and this is an interesting element of this application. We are asking that the DEP has... What's the word I'm searching for? Priority. David will word it better than I. That the DEP's riparian zone standards supersede the villages. It's clear that the villages ordinance is patterned after the DEP regulations. This project is subject to a DEP permit, and we would ask that, simply put, if we meet DEP standards, that would be sufficient for the village. But I will defer to David to word that better than I can. And we do have two waivers. This is an amended site plan application. There are some cross-gendered site plan checklist items that we're asking for a waiver that has nothing to do with this wall project, but to cross our Ts and dotting Is, we're asking for a waiver of those site plan checklist items. And catch-all, any approvals, waivers, or variances the board deems necessary. And with that, I will stop talking.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just had a few questions. Well, Mr. Chairman, first of all, I'll ask how much more time the board feels it can devote to this matter this evening?
Well, I mean, it depends. Why don't you go on with your questioning? It might lead to other questions.
That's fine. And what I think I'm probably going to do, Mr. Chairman, is order a transcript of this evening's meeting. That's certainly for the convenience of the board members who were not able to be here tonight. It's also going to be for my use because I will want to review Mr. Latentia's testimony, and there may be a few items I want to supplement and expand on a bit at the next meeting. But I just had a few questions, and then we're certainly happy to hear feedback or comments from the board and interested parties. Mr. Latentia, just a couple of real quick questions. First of all, the plan, and it should be clear by now, calls for the existing crib walls essentially to be buried, correct?
Correct.
Yes, and that was discussed, I know we discussed that a few years ago at the concept hearing. There's no concern or issue with that at all in terms of environmental impact or anything else? That's an accepted way of dealing with these walls, is that correct?
These walls have been buried since the day they were built, simply put. That wall extends 11 feet behind the face of the wall. So that wall remain in place. As a practical matter, the upper levels of the wall will accommodate grading and just good practice will be removed, but portions of that wall will remain buried, yes.
Okay. And in general terms, there's then a, and you testified to this, a 30% slope down from, for lack of a better word, from the point of the existing crib wall to the top of the new Keystone grid wall, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I think there... What will that do, or will that create additional rear yard area for some of these units? Or how could you characterize the usability or functionality of a 30% slope?
There is no utility as a rear yard on that slope. That is a one-on-three, 30-degree slope. And there'll be a fence, that is not a rear yard area. It is a slope. For erosion control measures, we have specified crown veg, which is a clover-like ground cover, low maintenance. The plans currently call out the split rail fence three to four feet behind the wall. It can easily be put at the top of the slope and perhaps should be from a safety perspective. But this is absolutely not a project to create rear yard area. It is to repair the wall.
Okay. And what's the lifespan of the walls that are proposed to be installed?
Okay, well, they are concrete walls, absolutely 50 years, probably 75 to 100 years.
Okay.
And what the one item, as we all know with concrete, the one item they're susceptible to is salt. And I'm sure Chris knows this from his curbs and sidewalks. I'll acknowledge, this is in a protected area. No one's spreading or spraying salt in this location. Yes, we have runoff from the municipal storm sewer system, but certainly it diluted by that point in time. And yes, there can be measures to increase, for example, there's coatings you put on the wall, it becomes a cost factor. But as a practical, competent associates, we have constructed walls in the late 80s, early 90s, very similar walls. They are as good today as the day they were constructed.
And you have shown cross-sections in your plan, have you not? Those plan sheets, I think it's Plan Sheet 6 and perhaps 6 and 7 or 5 and 6, is that right?
Plan Sheet 6 provides cross-section through all the retaining walls, and will also an element, and the soil movement calculations are also provided with those cross-sections.
Yeah, maybe we could look at that just very briefly. I don't want to spend a lot of time on that necessarily, but, and we're not going to obviously go through each point on it, but maybe you could just run the board very quickly through Sheet 6 so they understand what they're looking at, and they can examine that at their leisure at another time. If we could have Sheet 6, please.
What was that?
If you could just display Sheet 6, please.
Sorry about that, hold on one second.
That's fine.
What was the one?
That's not the one.
These are cross-sections through the upper three walls. You know, I will acknowledge very, you know, very techie from an engineering perspective, but the left-hand edge of the cross-section is actually the existing wall. It shows the three-on-one slope transitioning down to the right edge of each cross-section is the proposed wall. So you could see the slope from the existing upper wall. And for example, if you want to look at some of the detail, if you look at the upper wall, if you look at the left edge of the cross-section, you can actually see the two tiers. There's the upper wall, the bench between the walls, and then the lower wall. The shaded area is the fill that we are placing that is held up by the right edge of the cross-section, which is the GeoGrid reinforced Keystone wall. And we... It's known as the average end area where we calculate the fill. You can see how the wall height varies. Now, if the goal was to create level backyard area, which is not the case, you could see we would have to double the height of these walls and hence double the cost of the walls. It's very, for example, if you look at the upper wall, you could see if the goal was to create a level backyard area, it's that much more wall. 12-foot, it would be a four-to-six-foot more wall across the length of the wall, so on so forth. But these cross-sections are provided. And you could see, and this was a question that has been proposed to me, we are not blocked, because of that three-on-one slope, we are not blocking the line of sight from the back of the Kirill Lane Townhouse unit. I mean, most of them have six-foot-high stockade fences, so I'm not sure to what extent a line of sight is a concern. But if it is a concern, you can see that slope does not block the line of sight down to the ponds, if that is a concern.
So the fact...
Let me, and... Go ahead.
No, it's all right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, and while I spare a moment, on the... Circling back on the variance waiver for the riparian zone disturbance under your ordinance, I'm reading from Section 6 of the ordinance, "exceptions. The disturbance of riparian buffer zones shall only be permitted for the following activities," and that it is different categories. Category B, "new disturbance necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare, but not such but not limited to necessary linear development for access or utilities where no feasibility alternative exists to such disturbance." I would submit we meet that standard exactly. Also, Item D of Section 6, "new disturbance necessary to prevent extraordinary hardship on the property owner peculiar to the property." I think we meet that criteria dead-on. So that is in support of the waiver slash variance for riparian zone disturbance under the village ordinance. And I just want to add that to clarify that.
And you indicated earlier that a DEP permit is required for this work. Would it be accurate to say from an engineering perspective that the purpose and intent of the DEP in terms of how this plan will be analyzed is essentially consistent with the purpose and objective of the village ordinance as well, which is to protect the repairing area, is that right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. And just talk very briefly, if you could, about construction sequence here, just in terms of what gets done first, what gets done second, what gets done third, what gets done last?
Well, I wish a design engineer would have more control of that. Ultimately, it is, that is going to be the contractor's responsibility. But a proper contractor who fits the scope of this project will have multiple crews. They are going to seek to set up their, obviously pre-construction meeting, establish their erosion control measures. We do have, we have some of these plants in the Bergen County Soil Conservation District and has received approvals. They're going to establish their access points, certainly Duar Avenue, at the south downstream end of the site, that circular around those townhouse units. Establish a proper access out to Cedar Avenue. In Chris Ruderhau's report, he has indicated that his expectation is proper protection of the village sewer, and that will be addressed. The stockpile areas will be established, erosion control measures placed. While all that is going on, the ponds will be lowered by pumping down the ponds, and that is detailed on the plans. And we'll be utilizing the silt chamber and the storm sewer manholes as pump chambers. And under a normal condition, to be clear, the pumps will be able to keep up with the no flow or a low flow. I'm sure we could get five inches of rain the day we start. And to be clear, the pumps, at that point, that flow will flow into the ponds as a normal But then tree removal would follow. And then the dredging of the ponds necessary to set your base course of the crushstone. And as a practical matter, the contractor is going to have to be flexible. There are going to be delays so that you have to be able to shift crews from one pass to another. For example, if there's a delay in block delivery, who knows why, tractor-trailer accident on 287, there's no delivery today. He needs to be able to be placing crushstone on another element of this project. And once the base course, and we're up three courses of block, that's when production picks up because we'll have a leveling haul road behind the walls. And we're also compacting that select fill as they're tracking material back and forth, and these walls will rise up. And, but ultimately, I mean, that's a simplified summary, but that's going to be the contractor's responsibility.
Okay. And the last question, Mr. Chairman, because I want to leave some time for questions and comments. Mr. Latentia, just comment briefly on the visibility of these walls from beyond the confines of the Hopper Ridge complex.
Simply put, they're in the middle of the site in a ravine. They are not visible from the perimeter of the site with one exception, a direct neighbor on Cedar Avenue, when the foliage is down, you may be able to see, which is why we specified a Norway spruce. If you look at Plan Sheet 3 of 8, we specified Norway spruce at the north end of the wall to block that line of sight. But simply put, other than one neighbor, these walls are not visible from the... Until you're on top of them. At the south end, they're totally hidden by the berm around the lower detention pond. They are in the middle of the site in a ravine.
And there are indeed buildings, two buildings in each of four units on the, let's say, I'm going to say the east side of these ponds as well, correct? Between that and the homes on South Irving Street?
Correct, correct. Yeah, there's two and a half, correct.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I'd have, subject to what I said a little bit earlier. I says, I say I will be providing a transcript and I may well have some more direct testimony. I'm sure there will be questions also that will require additional testimony from Mr. Latincich, but that's, that's all we would have for now. And I, I thank you and the board for your patience. Uh, it, it is a bit tedious, I admit, uh, but I appreciate the patience of the board. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Chris, for housekeeping, is it, um, should we proceed with cross or, I mean, with the hour and stuff? I'm just trying to figure what would be the best flow on it?
Certainly, the best flow would be to adjourn, have cross board question, the public's questions, uh, because quite frankly, that could go for at least an hour or more.
Yeah, that was my concern. If we started to get into it, you know, I'm sure the board, it is a very big project, so I, I anticipate a lot of questions. Uh, and I also saw someone in the chat.
Yeah, there's several questions in the Q and A section from, I, I think, um, anonymous, I'm not sure which, and a couple of raised hands. I don't know if it's worth trying to get into those now, if that's up to you guys.
Well, no, we're not gonna get into those. I'm just one of the people to know that they're able to ask questions of the engineer after the board and the board professional questions, uh, ask questions. So they'll have their opportunity, so it's not really that they should post anything on the chat or anything. They'll have the opportunity to ask questions. So I guess, guess for the flow, I didn't wanna get into it and then kinda have to stop it and then pick up and it might disjoint, where it might be better if we, uh, stop it now. You can actually review and fill up anything else at the next meeting. And then, uh, we can pick up from there, then we can get into questions from, uh, the board, board professionals, and then from the public.
I think that makes sense, Mr. Chairman, and I, as I indicated earlier, I will provide a transcript. I think that'll be helpful for all of us to kinda parse through the testimony heard this evening.
Okay, and there was a lot of exhibits. They are posted on the website. So for anyone that's listening, that they could review those, I think that'll be helpful.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we did not post on the website. You know that in, in, when this application was filed, there was a multitude of documents and exhibits provided. They have not all been posted, quite honestly, because we were a little concerned that doing so might be a little bit overwhelming. Um, so I, I know that the, my understanding is that the Village Hall is, is now open, uh, to the public if, if members wish to visit, and I believe that those are, are, uh, visible now and can be viewed at the Village Hall. I think probably in the interest of being complete and, and at the risk of overwhelming the board with, with documents, I think we will proceed to post, uh, and provide to Ms. Wondergem for posting on the Village website the balance of the exhibits that were provided when this application was filed. We're not gonna necessarily refer to all of them. There's some subdivision maps and other historical data that I don't think we're necessarily gonna have to deal with, but it might be helpful background information for the board as well as the public.
Okay, that's a good idea. And did you wanna carry this to the next meeting, the October twentieth meeting?
I think that's fine. I, I, I'll let our court reporter know right now. If she can start on the transcript, that would be great. Um, and I, I, and Mr. Latincich, are you available on the, on the twentieth?
Yes.
Yes, okay, then, Mr. Chairman, that will be fine. Well, I appreciate that we can keep this moving forward.
No prejudice to the board, correct?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, an extension of time as needed, Mr. Martin. Thank you.
And in with, in light of the fact that we had about, you know, a, a twenty or so residents, maybe more, uh, participating or asking, raising hands and, and yes, asking questions, can we just let them know, um, how they may be able to submit questions for the next meeting since they didn't get to theirs tonight, or if they can, if they can't attend? Uh, maybe we could just let them know how.
If I may, Melanie, that's a good point. I was gonna say, um, at the next meeting, the engineer will be recalled. Um, I don't think Mr. Rutherford has nearly as long as he did tonight, um, if at all, but he might have some. Then the engineer for the board, the planner, um, the board members, myself, would have a, a chance to, as the chair said, cross-examine or ask questions, uh, probative questions into the testimony. And then it would be opened up to the public. At that point, you know, the public can go forward and ask their questions that they have written down or can hold from tonight, that they can pick up from any of the testimony at the next meeting, and then they can go through those before any other witness is called. So they don't have to wait for a, any other witness to be called and then have, um, the engineer called back. They can do it right at that meeting, uh, at the next meeting.
And the questions from the public should be geared towards, uh, T-Bor's testimony and focus on that. It's not to make statements or anything like that, so make it pointed towards what he testified to.
Is there-
There'll be time to make statements at the end, that's correct.
Do residents have an ability, since we're doing Zoom or these remote meetings, to submit questions or that's strictly attend as, as usual?
It would have to be, it would have to be like a regular meeting, sort of like yourself. You get to ask the questions at the meeting. An individual can't be at the meeting. Uh, there's no ability really for them to approach the, uh, the witness.
Thank you. I was just, I'm more clarifying for some people who have posted that specific question in the comments.
What people can do, if there's a group of people and they, one person can't make it, they can provide questions to that person and ask the question from, you know, from the witness.
As if it was their own question, yes.
Yeah. Okay, um, anything else, guys? All right, all right, Dave.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rutherford.
Good evening.
Okay, take care, Dave. Thanks, T-Bor. All right, our next item.
Thank you, Dylan.
Anytime.
Okay, our next item will be adoption of minutes, September fifteen, twenty twenty. And-
Is it September first or September fifteen?
Uh, September fifteenth.
Okay.
And the minutes were circulated, and the only one that wasn't present for that was Debbie, so everyone else should be.
Right, anybody that's here is, was there.
Yeah. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second. Okay, um, yes. Mr. Joel.
Yes.
Miss Suzanne. Yes. Miss Bart. Yes. Miss Wes. Yes. And Miss Brian. Yes.
Okay, the minutes are approved as written for September fifteen, twenty twenty. Okay, do we need a, an executive session at all, Chris?
No, no, we don't. Thank you, Richard.
Okay, do we have any, uh, further business, anybody? Okay, do we have a motion to conclude the meeting?
I'll move.
Okay, do we have a second?
I will.
Second, finally. Okay, all in favor? Uh, yes, anyone opposed? Okay, all right, we're concluded. Thank you, everybody.
Night, have a good night.
Everyone, have a good night. Stay safe.
You too, bye.
Say, bye-bye now.
Dane, bring your laptop in tomorrow so I can fix the audio mic. It's a little garbly.
Yeah, it was. It was shaking a little bit.
At the end. See you tomorrow. Have a good night, everybody.